Praise for the pledge of allegiance. The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, welcome everybody. Beautiful day out there. Okay, we're going to jump right into Mayor's emerging issues and report. And Ben Miller, our communications manager is going to walk us through this. All right. Okay, recent community events, boy, the arts explosion at the PAC last weekend, starting on Friday and then the whole weekend, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. There's myself and Karen Brigada at the arts explosion. I have to tell you, when I walked in the door, I just had one word, wow. It was absolutely phenomenal, well done. Thank you to the Arts Commission, the Arts Foundation, and John and your crew, Abby and Cassie for all the work they did. It was absolutely fantastic. You know, I have to tell you that it's an event that keeps getting better every year. So we had orders from all over and it was a great event. All right, next. Okay, we had, go back one. We had the long awaited opening and ribbon cutting, Papay Kenworth, they had an open house and a ribbon cutting, got a tour of the facilities and the Papay family was present, present in the picture as well as the senior leadership of the company. This is the property and the building, the buildings, just east of the freeway on 320th, just on the other side of I-5. This represents $50 million plus of investment. In fact, actually, we moved the borders of Federal Way to be able to incorporate this massive investment. And that day finally came where we could cut the ribbon and really celebrate and they're going to have not only a repair facility for trucks, but also a showroom and a repair facility and parts and it was a big, big doings. Okay, then we had the, I had the Puget Sound Regional Council General Assembly that was at the Convention Center. This is where the PSRC, as it's known, is where representatives of all of the representatives from the major I-5 counties, which are Stehamesh, King, Thurston, also Kitsap. And we talked about, you know, funding programs for all kinds of transportation projects and it was good to hear some, we had some great speakers and the executive director of the PSRC spoke and this was their annual assembly downtown. Okay, next. Next, we get to see some rugby action, the Federal Way Warriors Rugby Day on May 24th. And great to see the kids and the families and this was over at Sahali, the play fields there, so it was fun to see all those folks and getting exercise and learning the sport of rugby. All right. Next, we had the Pete Von Reichbauer and his Good Eggs Breakfast held at Emerald Downs. We had the interim or what is now the confirmed King County Executive Shannon, Shannon Braddock. And she did a great job talking about, you know, she's only got about 200 days on the job, she's not running for the position and she was appointed to the position shortly thereafter, Dal Constantine went over to head up Sound Transit. So it was good breakfast to hear about, you know, what the plans are and at least one of the candidates for county executive was present. And so we've got this interim period and then beginning, as soon as the vote is certified, we'll have a new county executive once that, once the vote is certified and that'll be in November of this year. We had the Free Star Fitness Ribbon Cutting and we were there with the Chamber of Commerce and great to see, this is right next to Billy McHale's and so it's sort of a relaunch of the business and a re-marketing, but it's great that they're investing in the upgrade and continuing with their business. Yesterday we had Pride Flag, Pride Flag Raising and Catherine North and Allison Fine were speakers and we rose the flag for pride for the month. Next. Upcoming community events, we've got the gun safe giveaway at City Hall on June 7th. We've got the drive-through recycling event at South King Tool Library on June 7th, shortly thereafter. And Chief, the gun safe starts at nine, is that right?
Yes, Mayor, it starts at 9:00 AM and we will conclude when we give out about 500 gun safes.
Fantastic. Okay. Then we've got the drive-through recycling event starting at about 10 o'clock and that's over at the South King County Tool Library. And then we've got the multi-service center Spring Into Action Dinner on June 7th and that'll be at the Muckleshoot Casino. All right. Upcoming events, we've got Hunruwe Garden Grand Opening on June 10th. That's going to be, that's a week from today and if you haven't seen it yet, I would encourage you to go over there or better yet, come at 10:30 AM on next Tuesday at the Hunruwe Garden. It's in between the Little League ballfields on Campus Drive and the King County Aquatic Center. Then we've got the Flag Day celebrations at the King County Aquatic Center on Flag Day, June 14th.
10:00.
10:00. Then we've got the Juneteenth Flag Raising at City Hall on June 18th and then will be closed for Juneteenth on June 19th and then we'll have the Red, White, and Blues Festival on July 4th and that's over there at Celebration Park. All right, now it's time for the most important part of the meeting, public comment. All right, I've got some folks that have signed up and I'll read off some folks.
Mayor?
Yes.
I just got a text that right now may have been corrected, but there was no sound on the Zoom link for this meeting.
Ah. Okay.
That's for a second.
All right, has it been fixed? All right, we'll look into that, thank you very much. Okay, now moving on to public comment, you've got three minutes unless you're here speaking on behalf of five people, they're present and you indicate that, then you get five minutes. All right, first we have Felicia Wilson and Stacy O'Shea, King County Library System. And then we'll have Dr. Janice Clark, then Bob Derrigan, Ken Blevins, Anna Patrick, Catherine North, Betty Taylor, Betty and Selena Taylor, Kevin Morris virtually, Willie Smith, and Harold Booker. All right, Felicia Wilson?
Okay.
All right.
Good evening. My name is Felicia Wilson and I'm the Regional Library Manager for Soundview Regional Libraries, which includes Federal Way, Federal Way 320th and a part of King County Library System. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to visit and talk about some of the exciting programs that we're going to have coming up over the summer and we look forward to seeing some of you there. Before I turn it over to my cohort Stacy O'Shea, I would just like to give a shout out to the incredible staff that works to create innovative programming for this community and they do a wonderful job and I think you will see that in some of the programs that Stacy will be introducing to you when she speaks. Again, thank you so very much and I'll turn it over to Stacy so that she can talk to you about our program.
Hello, Stacy O'Shea, Librarian and Information Services Manager at the Federal Way and the 320th Library and I also support libraries at Woodmont, Des Moines, and Valley View. And I just wanted to share some of the cool things that we're having this summer and I know you're thinking it, it's June, therefore it must be time for summer reading. Yes, it is. We invite you to please become curious creatures with us all summer at all of our libraries. We're doing something a little bit different this year. Usually you come in, you pick up your log, you read, you turn it in, you get a halfway prize, you get a finisher prize, things like that. This year, we would really like to welcome everybody at the beginning of the summer and really celebrate the first steps into this reading program. It's going to be very exciting this year. So starting this Saturday, June 7th through the August 31st, ages zero to 18 can come to our libraries or come to a launch party and you're going to pick up your welcoming kit, which is a nifty box, which has some fun stuff in it. There's a Red Robin coupon, there's some flyers for our programs, some book lists, some bookmarks, really neat fun things to get you started. And the most important part of that is each person can also choose a book to take home and keep to get them started for the summer. So pretty excited about that. And to get this also going, we're going to have a launch party at Steel Lake Park, Wednesday, June 11th, 5:00 to 7:00 PM. That's in partnership with the Federal Way Parks Department. Very cool. You can have, we're going to have food, outdoor activities, we're going to have a photo booth, you can pick up your welcome kit there. I have 30 seconds. I have much more to say. So also this year, we are leaning into getting our adults into reading. Normally they can also participate in the kids and teens summer reading program. This year, we're going to have Adult Book Bingo in partnership with Seattle Public Library and the Seattle Arts and Lectures Series. So you can come in, you can choose something like you want to read a book with humor or Pacific Northwest Nature. Am I done?
Go ahead.
Oh, good, thank you. I was going to be sad because I was going to talk about the one big book which counts for two squares. So that is pretty exciting. So if you fill out a line, you can turn that in and you're entered into a drawing for commemorative tote or if you do a blackout, you have a bigger drawing for Seattle Arts tickets. So that's pretty cool. Should I stop?
Do you have any more?
Let's talk about Juneteenth, which is a wonderful, exciting event that we're going to have at the library. It is on June 14th, it's 11:30 to 4:30. It is overlap a little bit with Flag, your Flag Day, but I think it'd be really cool if you went to Flag Day and then came and spent the rest of the day at the library because we're going to have a lot of stuff going on. We have a community leader forum, it's going to be moderated by Treana Holiday of Converge Media. We also have free professional portraits, basketball skills and drills workshop, a community or mural experience with a local artist and you're going to create a mural that's going to be on display at the library. We're just going to have a lot of stuff and that's in partnership with Game of Life and Phenomenal She. So I do thank you for your time and we do hope to see you a lot at the library this summer. Thank you.
All right, thank you both. So this is at the Regional Library on First Avenue. Okay, great. I'm sorry? Very good, okay, very good. Okay, on the Juneteenth, on the 14th, on the 14th, okay, great. Dr. Janice Clark.
I'm Dr. Janice Clark again, a homeless veteran since January 18, 2025, who is living in my car and couch surfing to take showers and decent meals. Former address Kits, Corner, 1201 South, 336th Street, N 301. I rise today to continue to advocate for policies and resources to address our specific needs for 100% service-connected disabled veterans that's also are total and permanent and unemployed. She served to key areas of focus highlighting the challenges of veterans facing such as the transition, but also the mental health struggles, the lack of affordable housing, and increasing funding for HUD, VAS, Housing and Urban Development Veteran Affairs Support Housing Bachelor, partnering with the nonprofit I started 30 years ago, thank you Janice, boom, boom, to provide services for community, advocating for legislation and regulations that support veterans experiencing homelessness. Because of the limitation of the spoken word before this body, I will be submitting the petition to the federal government and CCing all the key stakeholders regarding, again, advocating, highlighting success stories of veterans, emphasizing the importance of prevention, collaborating with other key stakeholders, addressing the needs of different veteran populations, and highlighting the long-term benefits. In closing, my homelessness was not a choice, but a consequence of a system that not only failed me, but so many other veterans that are on the street that people want to talk about how hard it is for us, but the advocacy we're not finding. I've been asked to stand up for approximately 100,000 disabled veterans in Washington State and I intend on doing just that and taking it to the hill that other Washington. I am Dr. Janice Clark forever founder, closing forever founder and visionary of Safe Homes Nonprofit since 1995. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you. Bob Derrigan.
Mayor Jim, council members, appreciate this opportunity to talk tonight. I want to extend a special invitation to our people and our community to come and join us on June 14th as we celebrate our American flag with the Seroptimists. Our Lions Club have been involved with them for over 25 years and will spoil you like heck with a barbecued hot dogs, which you can come, it's free, if you make a nice donation, we turn around and give it to the Seroptimists. Wanted to invite you to that. And the other, very quickly, I wrote something a number of years ago, I've never written, never shared this, it's the only poem of its kind that I've ever shared. "I Promise To Remember." "I promise to remember the soldier who served us well with sacrifice and devotion into the depths of hell. Theirs was a journey shielded by a song and a prayer, they answered the patriot's call with a trumpet flare. I promise to remember for all I hold so dear, the precious price of freedom, a hope for peace, not fear. I promise, I promise to remember as I close my eyes each night, the assurance of brave sentinels, ready to defend and fight." Yes. "I promise to remember as I breathe and live, the living and fallen heroes everywhere, for they gave all there was to give."
Thank you, Bob. Ken Blevins. And then Anna Patrick.
Mayor Farrell, Council, thanks for listening to me today. Again, I got to follow this guy. I don't think any very many people can, he's a good man. But I wanted to speak on the Day Center again. I'm disappointed that the Council funded the Day Center, not the thought of what the Day Center could be, but what it is. I know they cleaned everything up and that kind of thing after they were refusing to for so many months and it is definitely a better looking place, but, and I know it does service some people, that we don't see people that are in cars and that kind of thing, so that is something that's worth having. But just the dysfunctionality of inviting people here, mostly homeless, addicted to drugs, and not having any services for them is just honestly, it's kind of stupid. So even the hotel that they're making over here isn't for those people either. So they come here, place closes at 4:00 and then close on the weekend. It's just homelessness doesn't close, it's kind of silly. So having a shelter would be good, but I've talked to some business owners and they're really, it's, the situations hurt them badly since COVID and before. And having a shelter open up where Red Lion is is something that a lot of businesses are really fearful of. I heard some rumors that there was some intimidation when they brought that up to the city and I was a little surprised about hearing that, so I didn't really get into getting enough information on that, but I was just kind of really surprised. I hope that that wouldn't be the case if businesses were concerned and that happened. So another thing, with all the stuff that's going on this summer, I still think that the Fourth of July celebration is awesome, but having a parade would be cool. So I know the city of Federal Way doesn't have a real downtown, it's kind of, you go to Puyallup and stuff like that, they have the old downtown type feel where you can walk from place to place, you can do, you know, nightlife, that kind of thing, where you can go from bar to bar without having to drive and then you can then go home and so on. It's just here, you have to drive to a bunch of different places and it's not safe, you know, it's not a safe, honestly, it's not a welcoming place to be when it comes to that. We have lots of options for food and stuff like that and it's pretty, pretty cool, but it would be good if the city would have that. So another thing, by my mother's house over on 304th and Pacific Highway South, that light sucks. So if you're driving southbound in the turn lane, the people going, well, going northbound, people coming southbound, it's just, there's no cars forever and you're just sitting there waiting to cross and same with people have to cross that road. I think it needs to be looked at, so I'd appreciate it, thanks, bye.
So Ken, it's 304th and Pacific Highway?
Yep.
And if it's, is it, if you are going westbound and you want it to go north or south, is it like you're facing westbound or you're facing?
No, no, that sucks too, but when you're, let's say you're going north and you're trying to go west?
Yeah.
Towards the high school?
Right.
That turn lane sucks, but everything does because there's not a lot of cars going right there?
Okay.
On PAC Highway and sometimes there's like a blinking orange or yellow?
Yeah.
And that's good, but most of the time it's not and just maybe a thought to look at it.
We will. EJ, you got that?
Yeah.
Very good, thank you very much. Okay, all right, and if anybody has any concerns about, hold on just for a second, Anna, sorry. If anybody has concerns about particular lights, you know, we all do, there's, you know, when I, where we live, there was a light just took sometimes forever to turn, you know, just let us know, we'll take a look at it and we try to time the lights and so we've got a great traffic engineer in Rick Perez, who's nationally known and we'll get on that if you have concerns about particular light locations. With that, Anna Patrick, thanks for your patience.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Anna Patrick, resident since 1996 and I'd like to talk about gun violence in light of the recent gun shootings, shootings in our city, violent shootings, some of them I've heard were self-defense. So I was really shocked to see that King County is distributing shots fired data and I didn't realize that certain data was not counted until the recent report when our King County Prosecutor celebrated the drop in gun violence in South King County and upon closer inspection, Federal Way's data was not included. I know you guys are going back and adding that in and I appreciate that. And what I also found very troubling was the fact that they didn't, that they just went ahead and celebrated it with a huge glaring hole of data. And secondly, that it's cherry picked data, so self-defense, which this violence at Uptown Square was determined to be, was not counted, that doesn't count as shots fired. And the shooting by, I think it was an elementary school, that is considered an accidental death, so it doesn't count. So these are juveniles under 21 that have access to guns, so I'm glad that you're having that safe giveaway on, I think it's the 7th. And I also like to point out that thankfully, this, our group Stand Up Federal Way got some police reports from the city. We were able to kind of really sift through these reports and detail out a sort of a heat map of the different cases and we've kind of made it really generic. If you look on the, I can probably send it to you guys, a link so you can see it, but I think it really showcases what's missing in the system now that's leading to a lot of guns not being confiscated despite threats with guns and gun access. So I hope that you'll take a look at this when we advocate for that money that's coming from the governor for policing because there's, it's pretty evident what we need here in Federal Way. We need to acknowledge that we have gangs too and that comes with the guns. And so anyway, thank you very much, I appreciate the opportunity to speak about that.
Thanks, Anna, and send that along to us. And Chief, did we get that over to the King County Prosecutor's Office?
Yeah, I think what Anna's talking about is first quarter of 2025 shots fired stats. This clearly happened, this is second quarter, so we are providing all that information. Yes, Mayor?
And we provided first quarter to them so they could go back?
Yep, we went retro, soon as it was brought to our attention that they didn't have our data. We've been collecting the data, so we just simply sent everything to them, they will go retro. So moving forward, 24 will give them all the data for 24, so they'll have that and as 25 data will be incorporated. So everything will be counted, starting second quarter, including Federal Way.
I do want to let everybody know that I did appreciate, and I know the Chief did as well, a personal communication from the King County Prosecutor Lisa Mannion to the Chief. Once they released that, I think there were some questions about Federal Way data's not being in there and the King County Prosecutor reached out to our Chief personally via email and said, hey, let's fix this. And so we have now. And I think we had, was it a staffing issue or what led to that, Chief?
Primarily changing crime analyst, so is priority of work. We were participating in regional intel meetings and so forth, so I was under the impression that during those meetings, our data was being provided, but when the information came out, was brought to my attention, we immediately provided the info, like a day or two later. So then they have everything of 24, so moving forward, 25, they have, they're getting our data.
Great, okay. All right, well, thank you for raising that issue. All right, Catherine North and then Betty and Selena Taylor.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, people. Happy Pride. Most of you were not at the Flag Raising yesterday, I'm sure. We had more people than this at the Flag Raising and the proclamation reading and so I just, because we're not having the proclamation read here, I just thought I would say my two cents worth. Thirty, almost 36 years ago, I moved here to be with my wife and makes me proud to see the flags flying, especially the ones on 320th, because the flag and the proclamation both, they show, they represent inclusion and acceptance and it's a message that you are not alone and that you are welcome here. Some young person right now is coming to grips with being gay or trans and wondering if it's better to be dead and that's a fact. The suicide rate amongst LGBT people, young people, is four to five times higher than it is for everybody else and it's not because gay kids are inherently suicidal, it is because the lack of acceptance and the rejection they get from their family leads them to that point. Let's make, I'd like to see, and if they have somebody, a safe person or a safe place, it makes all the difference in the world and the survival rate and I'd like to see us make Federal Way be the safe place for them. I'm sure many of you saw the article about the young women, young woman in Illinois who was beaten unconscious at a McDonald's simply for being a lesbian and that is just unacceptable and I hope we never see that kind of thing happen here. We need to be a place where everybody is accepted for who they are and does not allow that kind of hate. I myself have both internal and external scars from being told by those close to me that being a lesbian is wrong. We don't want to give that message to people. I have a young relative who for several years was afraid to come out to his immediate family because he was afraid of rejection. Don't be that parent. You know, people are born straight or they're born gay and it's simple. People's nasty comments to Pride Month are exactly why we need Pride Month. You know, if you don't, and I know there are some here who are just waiting for me to shut up because they don't like pride, but if you don't, if you think it's wrong, don't date a gay person. Don't marry a gay person. I have 30 seconds, you know, just, but don't be mean either, don't be hateful. There's just no reason for it. You don't have to approve, you don't have to like, but you don't have to be hateful. Some of the comments I've seen, some of the hateful comments I've seen after seeing comments about pride flags, it's sad that people have that much hate just because somebody is different than them. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. Okay, we've got Betty and Selena Taylor and we had somewhat of a miscommunication where we, there had been a request for a proclamation because this is National Gun Violence Awareness Month. Why don't I read the proclamation? Violence Awareness Month. Why don't I read the proclamation and I'll turn it over to Betty and Selena. Selena is Betty's daughter. All right. So I have a, and because it was, this was added after the agenda had been set, it's a mayoral proclamation. Proclamation, National Gun Violence Awareness Month. Whereas National Gun Violence Awareness Month is to honor and remember all victims and survivors of gun violence, and to declare that we as a country must do more to reduce gun violence, and whereas support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes hand in hand with keeping guns away from dangerous individuals, and whereas to help honor Americans whose lives are cut short, the countless survivors who are injured by shootings every day, as well as the family and friends who have lost their loved ones, as a city, we join the National Coalition of Organizations that have designated June as National Gun Violence Awareness Month, and now therefore I, the undersigned mayor of the City of Federway, do hereby proclaim June 2025 as National Gun Violence Awareness Month, and encourage all citizens to support their community, their local community's efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor and value human lives. Signed this third day of June 2025, City of Federway Mayor Jim Farrell. And I'll come down. And let's, I think we've got a picture. Let's go this one just a little. Okay, here we go. I think we're all, we're okay.
Good afternoon, evening, city council members and the community. My name is Selena Taylor, and this is my mother, Betty Taylor, obviously. And I am here to, today, as a mother, as an advocate, and as someone who's experienced the kind of heartbreak no parent should have to endure. In 21, my son Ezra Nehemiah Taylor was tragically shot and killed and innocent bystander caught in the crossfire of senseless gun violence. Ezra's was more than a statistic. He was a vibrant young man. He was an actor, a visionary, and a peace-loving soul who created a brand called Keep It Easy. A message he lived by and hoped to share with the world. He deserved to grow old. He deserved to live out his dreams. Today I stand here to receive this proclamation. Thank you, Mayor, not just in Ezra's memory, but on behalf of every family that has been shattered by gun violence. June is a National Gun Violence Awareness Month. And it is more than just a time to wear orange. It is a time to act. So I call on the city hall, in the city hall, on our leaders and every community member listening today. Let this proclamation be more than words. Let it be a commitment, a commitment to invest in youth, to support families impacted by trauma, to fund violence prevention programs, to create safe space, spaces, and real resources in our neighborhoods. Let us not wait until another life is lost. There are many lives have been lost recently. Ezra's story is just not one of many, but together we can make it a turning point. And the turning point we are making is in the lives of changing one person at a time. There are many people in this community and outside of this community as well. We are doing victim support groups. We're going into the schools and talking to the parents, talking to the children. A lot of times you have parents that are friends with their children. They are not parents to their children. And for us to go in and teach a loving logic way of loving their children and communicating with them and just being a present. But I wanted to share with you as well as we are doing advocacy and mentorship, legal wrongful death assistance, and collaborating with different professionals as well. And it's hard to do when you're talking about your child and your grandson. It's very hard to do this work. But we have to do it because this is a very, very important time in, in the season that we're in. And we're just, our hearts are just hurting because of the loss of these other families. And I represent all of families in Federway, in King County, Seattle, Tacoma, Pierce County, the whole Washington state. I'm representing just families and to love on them and to make sure that they have what they need and the tools that they need. My mother wanted to present something to you guys as well.
So I bet you're wondering why, why do I have these shirts? Okay, so these shirts are going to represent a tree and everything else in my room.
Thank you, Betty. Thank you. And on the day of the National Gun Violence Day, we encourage the City of Federway to wear orange to represent the community. Thank you guys so much. We love you so much. We appreciate you.
Thank you. Betty, did you want to say a few words?
Yeah.
Let's give Betty three, three new minutes.
So like my daughter said, so this is really hard. It is always hard, even though it's been 12 years. But it's hard. But when you have the support of your city behind you, when you have support of people that have walked the same walk that you have walked, that really helps a lot. I have been to Olympia so many times this session, and every time I went there, I was like, oh, my God, here I go again. I gotta testify again. And testifying for me was really hard. It was so hard. So even though I had, you know, the gun violence groups behind me and the pursuit was still hard, you know, but like my daughter said, we have to get through it. We have to get through it because people need us. They need us. But then we need them too. So I, I'm happy that, that the City of Federway is doing the gun giveaway, which is on national, that's the day of National Gun Violence Awareness is on June 7. And so I'm really happy about that. But we will continue to fight. We will continue to advocate. We will continue to stand by parents, stand by families, because we all need each other. I thank you for this opportunity. And y'all, don't forget to wear your shirts. Okay. Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you both so much. Thank you for your advocacy. Okay. And now we have, appearing virtually, will be Kevin Morris.
Mayor, it does not appear that Kevin Morris is on Zoom at this time?
Okay. Would you look to see if he rejoins? Even if it's after public comment, we'll accommodate him.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And maybe, I don't see any contact information on here, but maybe an email or something to see. He could have gotten busy or something. Okay, Willie Smith.
Good evening, Mayor and staff and everyone else. I'll try to make this brief. I'm also an umpire, and recently they had a tournament at Celebration Park. I talked with the park staff to try to get some things ready. And a lot of Canadian teams, this was just last weekend, Saturday and Sunday, the Canadian teams came down, et cetera, et cetera. I'm adding a little humor. So the park staff was really receptive getting things ready. And they asked me, do you know Mr. Walsh? I said, yes, I know. And he said, let him know how good we're doing. So Mr. Walsh, if you're here, the staff was great. Very, very, they did really well. The Canadian teams asked us Saturday, they said, why is it so dry? I said, this is Federway. What do you want? Rain. And so it rained. And I mean, it rained a lot. We got, it wasn't expected. However, we normally would call them for safety reasons, but the players ask us not to. The commissioner said they want to play. They came to play. Well, this is interesting. So we stuck it out. And the grounds crew came back and restored the grounds, and we were very appreciative. So Sunday went well. It really went well. And we want to thank City of Federway for doing that. Lastly, I met some good people here, Judge Larson, Mrs. Honda, staff, and such and such. But I was asked today, has nothing to do with the park, as an Air Force instructor, if I would return to Hawaii. So this might be my last meeting because I'm torn on whether to leave or stay. But when I talked to Ms. Honda today, it wasn't, it didn't take much. But in saying that, I want to say, oops, sorry, thank you for this great city that you have. And I know 2026 with FIFA is going to be well. If I go, if I don't go, you'll see me again. But again, I want to say thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Smith. And thank you for your service as, as an umpire, as a referee or an umpire?
Both. Both, both. And if I may add, Mayor, looking for, Canada told us they don't have a lot of seasoned umpires. I said, what do you mean? They said, it's mostly youth because people complain. Oh, and before I forget, Chief, the Federway Police came out to help with the parking. And we think that people like to be right there at the park close up. We say, gotta have the traffic flow. So thank you very much. I'm sorry, Mayor.
Well, I know that being an umpire and a referee can be a thankless job. John has told me, John has done his, Hutton, our Parks Director, has done his fair share. And thank you for taking the heat. Thank you for taking the, you know, those games can't be done without umpires or referees. So thank you on behalf of our community for doing that.
Thank you all.
All right. Thank you.
Mayor, may I say something?
Yeah, please.
So Sergeant Smith has been an ROTC instructor at Federway High School and retired two years ago?
Last year.
Last year. It's been a long year. And he has now an opportunity to go to Hawaii and to be an ROTC instructor again. And we're going to miss him if he takes a job, but it's meant for him. And I know he'll do great there.
Yes, thank you. And I want to, Judge Larson's not here, but I want to thank him again because he got us to meet, met a vulnerable Joe Jackson, and we got to know his family very well. I'm still in touch today, but he told us some things with our younger generation here. We're here today because there are strong men and women defending our right to be here. Thank you.
All right, Sergeant, make sure to send us a postcard. Thank you. All right. Harold Booker. And as he's making his way up, any luck with Mr. Morris?
I emailed him and I have a.
Okay, great.
I just got a message from him that he's unable to connect on Zoom.
So maybe, could we have somebody call him? Do we have a number for him? Did he provide a phone number, Heather?
He did.
Okay, maybe somebody can give him a call and, okay. Mr. Booker?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the Council, and Chief. Here tonight, because I want to thank the Federway Police Department. Eleven months ago today, I had my worst day in my life. My wife was unresponsive, and I called 911. And I interacted with four or five members of the Federway Police Department who were magnificent on my worst day in my life. They were there. They were helpful. They were professional. They supported me as we waited four hours for the medical examiner to get there. They were the kindest people you would ever want, first responders. We can't thank them enough for showing up at the worst moments in our life and dealing with it in professional, logical, and caring manners. And I just wanted to make sure that I thank the police. Officer Brandy Otsworth was the officer that I remember. I caught their name in the flurry, but just outstanding and made the worst day of my life a much easier experience. And just wanted to take a moment to thank them and thank the city for supporting good people, doing their job, and helping us at those moments that we wish never occurred. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Booker. Thank you for sharing that. I'm so sorry for your loss. All right. We have, do we have Mr. Morris on the line? Okay. Well, why don't we, while we're working on, we're working at getting Mr. Morris connected in, why don't we move on to Council Committee reports? And as soon as we get Mr. Morris online, we'll begin his comment. So Parks Recreation, Human Services, and Public Safety Committee, Councilor Walsh.
Yes, we will be meeting once again on a week from tonight, on June 10, and at 5:00 right here. Also, I would like to thank the Arts Commission for doing a wonderful job with the Arts Explosion. It was an incredible event. And a big thank you to all of the Arts Commission and the staff that assisted them with it. And that is my report.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay, now we've got Land Use Transportation, Council Member Toby.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Our next meeting is going to be July 1 at 5:00 PM here in the chambers. We had our land use meeting last night. Had some interesting topics. One that will be coming for the council shortly is parking vehicles in backyards. So we'll, we discussed that, and we're moving that ahead, limiting the number of cars that some, or vehicles, be it a boat, a trailer, an RV, an airplane, or any other movable vehicle in a backyard. So didn't know it was an issue until it came forward. So that's my report.
Yeah, it is interesting. It's a little bit of a loophole in our code where we prohibit cars in front yards. I don't think it was anticipated people would park their cars in the backyards. And it presents a challenge for code enforcement.
And the piece that we'll have to really make sure is we don't move them out to the street.
Right. Okay. All right. Now we've got, are we ready to go?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay. And now we've got the final public comment, Kevin Morris, virtually. Mr. Morris, can you hear us? Mr. Morris?
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. All right.
Very good. Thank you. I had a little, had some difficulties connecting.
Very good.
Mr. Mayor and Council President Coach Mar and Council, a couple of things I'd like to discuss. One, which has been a bone that I've been picking for a long time, and that's been the community center. Mr. Mayor, that's going to be your, something that, your signature's going to be on that for a long time. The facility is 16 years old, and we're two years into rebuilding a locker room and sauna and the facility there. It is almost, I go there two, three times a week, and it's a joke. But that point made already. Now let's discuss just a little bit about gun violence. Please understand Please understand, it's not the gun that does the violence. It's the people that have the gun that does the violence. And so when you have gun buybacks or pickups or free stuff, remember, gun violence is not a good word. It's the people that use the guns and that's the violence. And thank you so much for hearing me, I appreciate it. Thanks.
All right, thank you very much. John, anything to add on the luck? Where's John Hutton? I think he's back in the, okay. Okay, thank you. That concludes public comment. We've got, now we're back on to Council Committee and Regional Committee Reports. Finance, Economic Development and Regional Affairs, Councilmember Tran.
Mayor, Councilmember Paul McDaniel will report out.
Thank you. FedRAC met on May 27th. Tonight's consent agenda has quite a few items forwarded to it for approval. Tonight's hearing, Agenda Item 7 will be the 2025-26 Budget Adjustment. So that'll be an interesting conversation. And we also have the first reading of the ordinance. Our next FedRAC meeting will be June 24th at 5:00 p.m. in Council Chambers.
Great, thank you very much. Logic Tax Advisory Committee, Councilmember Asif Adosson.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to say that we do have a full committee now, so all our vacancies are completely, the positions are filled. And we do have a new economic director, economic development director here, Meredith Neal. And so our next meeting, which is going to be June 10th at 2:00, is going to be with her leadership. And so on the agenda then, we had, we do have a full agenda. We're going to be talking about the TEG grants, the Tourism Enhancement Grants. And then also, we're just going to, we do have new members. So we're going to be talking about new ways, creative ways of using these grant monies or the funds that we have in this, to just be creative in how to spend or utilize it for our city's purposes and just make it so we can serve Federal Way better with these funds. So it's going to be a really robust conversation. And since we have new members on the committee, I think it's a great way to get them acclaimed to the, to being on the committee as well as them learning and understanding how these funds work. So again, our next meeting is going to be next Tuesday, the 10th at 2:00 p.m. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Honda, your report on regional committees.
Thank you. Yesterday at 9:00 in the morning, a number of people met at the Chamber of Commerce for their first business walk. This is something that we went out into the community, into targeted businesses and we asked three questions. How is your business doing today? What do you see, where do you see it in 12 to 18 months? And how can we help you if you have any concerns or issues? And thank you for having a business in Federal Way. This is a program called PIES, Economy Sustainability, Placemaking and Innovation. And it is an ongoing program. There's a 45-minute training session and anyone can go to the next training and then be part of it. It took about an hour and a half of talking to businesses. We went out in teams of two. It's a very, it was very cool. I expected to hear, what I heard was not what I expected to hear. So I, and I was very impressed with the businesses that have been here in Federal Way for 30 years or more and who are still here today. So that was with the chamber. At the, right before that, I had a Zoom meeting with AWC about the federal legislative issues. I'm a member of the Federal Way Legislative Issues Committee. And what was really concerning was hearing about the potential cut in CDBG funding and other funding sources that are going to impact cities. Of course, every day is a different day and so hopefully those funding cuts won't happen. But I'd like to let council know that AWC is currently asking for your input on the 2026 legislative agenda. A survey is available. It's on an email that they sent out last Wednesday. And that email has a lot of information from AWC on things that happened in the legislative session. The next PIC meeting is next Wednesday, June 11th from 7:00 to 9:00. We're going to be discussing revising the Public Issues Committee, House Bill 2015 with the Criminal Justice Sales Tax and an update on regional boards and committees and levies and bonds. And Mayor, I'd like to ask if perhaps the council could get an update from our legislative team on things that happened down in Olympia that would have an impact on the city?
Yeah, we're working on getting that scheduled.
That would be great.
Brian, you're working on that, correct?
Yep.
That would be great. I also want to let people know that Farmers Market, which most of us are there every Saturdays, it seems to be going really well. But this Saturday is the first Federal Way's Got Talent Contest. So if you're interested, be there about noon. And we've got, we have really great talent here in Federal Way. So sign up and show us what you can do. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, Council President, report.
Well, I've been out of town for a little bit for a little granddaughter who had major surgery in Spokane at Shiner's Hospital. And I just want to say thank you to all of you who have donated to Shiner's wonderful facility. They treated us beautifully. She had hip dysplasia, which for a little four-year-old is totally traumatic, it's four-hour surgery. And what I would do want to say is that the community surrounding the hospital, there's three hospitals altogether there. And this reminded me of Federal Way because we have our hospitals and they had discounts for hotel rooms and special rates for food. And it was very wonderful for us, supporting us as, you know, people who are in dramatic times. And I just thought it would be a good thing to pass on to our chamber how welcoming people were, especially those businesses surrounding the hospital. I do want to say though, coming back from SeaTac and I did see Ezra Taylor's memorial along the side of the road on Pack Highway. But driving back from SeaTac on Pack Highway to Federal Way, I was amazed getting to Federal Way because I haven't driven it for a while, how clean our city is. So thank you, Mayor. I, we are, we are clean and spacious and it's quite, it's different than it was. It was a beautiful evening. I'm driving along thinking, oh my gosh, I just flew over Mount St. Helens, Mount Rainier, coming here. And thinking, gosh, and looking out and, you know, kind of dirty around SeaTac. But when you got to Federal Way, it was just clean, spacious and beautiful. So I think we can be very proud of our community. I do want to remind everybody, July 26th, we're going to have a meeting with the council and the school board directors at the Farmers Market from 10:00 to noon. It's one of those town hall kind of things, but we're going to have cookies and conversation with the school board and it'll be right in the middle of the market so people can come through. And even if you don't remember or you're new or forgotten, you'll see us all sitting there and you can come and sit and talk and have some coffee with us and a cookie. Thank you, Mayor.
Very good, thank you very much. Also, just as an update, this is how fast we operate here. The, our lobbyists are actually going to be here for the study session and the first meeting of July. So July 1st, probably about 5:00 p.m., our, actually our lobbyists, we're going to be here and give us an update. So it's already in the works. Oh, yeah. And also, we want to recognize our school board member, Joan Murphy. Let's give her a big round of applause. Thank you so much for your service to our community. Okay, now we are on to the consent agenda. These items have gone through committee and then it can be passed all at once. But after I read them, I'll ask if a council member wants to pull an item for separate considerations. All right, here we go. Consent agenda, Item A, minutes for the May 20th, 2025 City Council Special and Regular Meetings. Item B, AP vouchers, April 16th through May 15th, 2025. Payroll vouchers, April 1 through April 30th, the 2025. And that was B. Item C, monthly financial reports, April 2025. Item D, Tourism Enhancement Grant Operation, Recommendations, Performing Arts and Event Center Operational Support, 2025. Item E, 2025 Children's Dance Theater Camps Recreation Agreement. Item F, Police Department Bomb Disposal Unit Grant. G, Purchase of Replacement Copiers. H, Purchase of GTAC laptops. I, Purchase of Cradle Points for Police Vehicles. And J, 2025 Highline College Small Business Development Center, otherwise known as SBDC, Inter-Agency Agreement. Council, having read all those, are there any items you want pulled for separate consideration? Councilmember Dovey?
Yeah, I'd like to pull Item H.
H, H is pulled. Yeah, council, any other items? Okay, Council President?
Mayor, I move a approval of Items A through G and then Items I through J.
Second.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second as to those named items. Are there, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Those matters passed unanimously. Councilmember Dovey?
Yeah, I'd like to pull Item H. We had this discussion about these laptops that are replacements for the police vehicles. And I think that, I wasn't convinced that it was necessary that if we didn't do it tonight or did it at another meeting, it would be earthshattering to our business.
Yep.
And I believe that there's maybe some other questions we should ask about pricing and discounts and different things, being that I come from that industry. I know some of the questions to ask and I know that these take four weeks to get from when you order them. And I don't think in two weeks if we've moved this, unless somebody tells me I'm totally wrong, to maybe flush some of those things out with the IT department.
May I make a, actually just a point of order or a question? Would you want to maybe bring it back to committee for consideration? Ask the body to send it back to committee? Or do you want it, a report done before the main body?
I don't, I would rather have the report maybe back to the main body. I don't want to hold this up too long.
Okay.
But I just think there might be some questions that weren't asked.
So was that the former, councilmember, are you making a motion to continue this to the next council?
Yes, I'd like to move this to, unless, to the next meeting, two weeks from now.
Second.
There's been a motion a second to move this item to the next business meeting on July 1st. Is there any discussion on that point?
I think it's July 2nd, our meeting, isn't it?
I think it may be the 1st.
Land use is on the 1st, isn't it?
July 1st.
July 1st is the council meeting.
Okay.
All right. Okay, all right. I knew that, because I just looked at the calendar, it's something else.
I gave the wrong date then for land.
That's right.
June 17th is the council meeting.
Well, that's the second council meeting in July.
Okay.
This is the first meeting in July.
Okay, so two council meetings away then.
I think we could get it in one council meeting, the next.
July 1st.
No.
17th, June 17th.
All right, you guys got to talk slowly for me, sorry about that. Everybody else is, everybody else knows what we're doing but me, all right. July 17th, there's a motion. Oh, I'm sorry, okay. Hey man, it's been a long day, all right. Okay, okay. June 17th, all right. There's been a motion a second. Is there any further discussion?
I assume that we're rescinding the previous motion that was seconded?
Friendly amendment?
Friendly amendment accepted.
All right. It's really embarrassing, all right. Sorry about that, you guys. So, okay, friendly amendment and the person who made the second agrees with that friendly amendment, all right.
And the motion is to go to June 17th?
June 17th. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, matter passed unanimously. Somebody get me a calendar. All right. Okay, public hearing. We've got Item A, Public Hearing on the Proposed 2025-26 Biennial Budget Amendment. We'll have Steve Grum, our Finance Director, give a presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. The presentation is going to pop up on us, we're using a different, here we go. There are generally only a small number of reasons that, yes, sir?
I do need to, just at this point, I, what I'm going to do is open the public hearing on the public budget, on the budget amendment at this point. All right, please proceed.
Thank you, Mayor. We try to amend the budget three times during each year. And there's only a handful of reasons that we want to do that. We want to, we generally want to carry forward things from the prior year so it doesn't impact the current budget. We recognize new grants when they, when they are approved by you. And then from time to time, you approve things that I need to get the budget caught up on. Some of them are easy, some of them, sometimes the revenue is real obvious and sometimes it is not. And I will tell you, I think I'm about a month late because this time it was, it was a little bit difficult. We do have some new obligations that were presented to us. We do have some approved contracts and projects and we have some grants. And we have some things that we are pulling from fund balances. In the case of restricted funds, that's often what the restricted balance is there for. The handful of items that we are funding, that we are now adding to, proposing to add to the budget, you had approved the purchase of some property over at Steel Lake for $400,000 and that is being pulled from the fund balances of the Surface Water Management Fund and Parks CIP. There is a, an array of batteries over at the Performing Arts Center. This is a UPS, an uninterrupted power source. That's usually the sort of thing that you hear that takes care of the server rooms. But in this case, the batteries are what takes care of the house. The lights, the sound, the emergency exits, the things that you would want to stay online if there was a power outage so that the audience would be safe, et cetera. You also approved $33,000 of Farmers Market equipment, so I want to get that added to the budget. We had some locker room project architect costs. That's going to be coming from the Parks Levy, Parks Capital Fund and the, and some costs for computer room air conditioning. And I know you're thinking, that sounds an awful lot like IT. However, our Parks Department is the, is the department that handles all of our facilities expenses. So computer room, air conditioning comes out of that. That's what, that fund balance is there for. And I think you've, you've had Thomas discuss four items that I need to get added to the, to the budget that are coming out of the IT Internal Service Fund from its fund balance. That would be costs related to IT camera installation, the My Building Permit Software that our community development uses. This would be for the front-facing, I believe that's the customer-facing aspect that they're doing. Thomas has got a consultant working with Microsoft 365. That will impact the functionality, I think, of every employee in City Hall. They may not know it, it's the IT stuff and the, working in the background. And then there's also an IT server cluster replacement that Thomas talked about. All of that comes from fund balances. Now, I have some things that we're calling new revenue. We, you approved the operations of the Farmers Market. When Bill Vidino came to you, he presented a budget that had about $120,000 in revenues and expenses. And what we're seeing is the revenues, I think, are coming in a little bit higher. And we also have to reimburse the vendors a little bit higher. We still think it's going to break even, but I proposed a budget of equal and offsetting revenues and expenses of $150,000. We don't want to be in a position where we can't reimburse vendors. We need that to be in the budget. There's the Curb Grant that came out of Economic Development. There were some vehicle purchases that were refunding from additional right-of-way revenue that is, when I call it additional revenue, it's coming in higher than budgeted. The volume of right-of-way revenue is higher, there was no change to fees. And then we had restricted donations for the Henwory Garden Project. So that allows us to add revenue to the budget for those donations and then the expenses that they're paying for. The most difficult expense that I had to come to, come up with a funding package for would be for the collective bargaining agreements. Much of what government does is service. When we're talking about our police service or any of the services that our staff does out in the city, it's salaries and benefits that we're talking. So we either have to find the revenue to cover it or we would cut staff. And I, sales tax is usually how we are able to fund additional expenses. We try to budget cautiously, conservatively. This year, sales tax has not been coming in as we had hoped. However, unrestricted utility taxes has. In the first three months, I needed another month to get another month's worth of data to project the rest of the year. Usually I prefer to only look at the revenues that we've actually received in the bank. But I remember back during budget study sessions saying, you know, utility taxes, I think we're being a little bit light, but that'll help us. And in this case, it really has. Now, in the same breath, we also have the right-of-way inspection revenue that I talked about a moment ago. But I think it's fair to reduce our sales tax reduction. I think we've had conversations at FedRec where we've looked at sales tax and we've said, you know, it's coming in above budget from last year, but it's just not exceeding budget. Let me show you a couple of graphs. Unrestricted utility tax revenue, now there are three components of- Unrestricted utility tax revenue, now there are three components of utility tax. There's the good old 6% that is unrestricted, that is available for use for the general fund. In 2006, the voters authorized an additional 1.75, and then in 2020, we added 10% strictly for the solid waste and recycling haulers. The, the revenue that I propose to use to cover the collective bargaining agreements is just the unrestricted portion, it's just the 6% unrestricted. And based on, based on how the first three months have played out, I, I think it's fairly confident that, that we can safely forecast this. Soon as I say that, I've jinxed myself, but we, but, but you know, I always bring revenue to the FedRec, month by month, and we monitor it. Sales tax, however, is a different story. This is the one that I want to bring down just a touch, because it's just under 5% unfavorable to budget. Now, it's better than last year. If I, if I graph every single January and February and March, and I look at how each of the months has compared to the same month in the prior year, we had one really good month and two months that were kind of down, and my circle just missed where I thought it was supposed to go. What I'm trying to show is that, for the first three months of 2024 and 2025, we're ahead $30,000. That's just breaking even compared to the previous year. We still hope that the year will play out differently, but I think it's prudent and cautious just to bring the sales tax down a little bit. So, this is a hearing. The ordinance, first reading, will be next on the agenda. This presentation suffices for that, and then I ask for you to refer this to the June 17th meeting for the second reading. I'm here for questions, if there are any.
Okay, Counselmember McDaniel.
Yeah, can you go back to the bargaining agreement?
Sure.
I just want to make sure we have.
Whoop.
No worries.
I've got a new clicker. I didn't take a class.
Sounds, you don't want either your Finance Director or your Barber to make.
Right there. So I just want to make sure that people understand when they see us, they see big numbers, and we had a larger conversation of this in the FedRec. So the collective bargaining agreement, how many different contracts are included in this price point right here?
That's three of them. There was the PSSA, Public Safety, I'm not sure I can articulate that, but that acronym is.
Support Services.
Thank you, thank you.
Gotcha.
There was also a Teamsters Group, and then there was also a Police Commanders Group.
Okay. And then is this for this year, is this for back pay, or what is this number representing right here?
One of them had retro going back to 2024.
Okay.
So that was a fairly big chunk, and then, but we need to be on a, on a new trajectory with all the current salaries now.
Gotcha.
So we've, so this will take care of the current year.
So this will come through '25, this will cover, and then we're gonna have to do something for next year, because that was not part of the '26 budget?
Yes, we will get all the new salaries loaded, and, yes.
Okay. And then when it comes to funding source, if I understand this correctly, what you're saying is that because we've had a better than favorable, as you say, favorable utility tax, you believe that will be up by 1.2, that will help cover that cost then?
That's right. We did not raise rates, however, our, our utility tax on the underlying utility costs, when they raise their rates, ours goes up. So I think it's both rate and volume, and that's a fairly steady revenue to predict. People don't change their utilities much. I mean, there's some seasonality to it, but it's fairly predictable.
No, I've found that that's probably the most reliable source of tax revenue. And then just the sales tax reduction, so we're estimating that we're, instead of having the budget that we have, we're gonna drop by 450, just to be more realistic on what the possibilities are?
Yes, yes, and we'll continue to monitor, monitor it every month, as we always do.
Okay, no, I just want to check on that. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Counsel, any other questions? Okay, and Heather, do we have any public comment? All right. Counselmember McDaniel, do you have a motion? With regard to the public hearing.
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
There's been a motion, a second, to close the public hearing. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing's now closed, oh great. Item A, ordinances, first reading. Council Bill 912, ordinance, 2025 to 2026 biennial budget amendment. And, let's see here. Would the city clerk please read the ordinance title?
Council Bill 912, ordinance, 2025-2026 biennial budget amendment, an ordinance of the City of Federal Way, Washington, relating to amending the 2025-2026 biennial budget.
All right. Counselmember McDaniel, do you have a motion?
Yes, I do. I move to forward the proposed ordinance to the June 17th, 2025 council meeting for second reading and enactment.
Second.
All right, there's been a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Matter passes unanimously. All right, now, we are on to, we've got a number of second readings. Item B, Council Bill 905, ordinance for the 2025 Speed Limit Ordinance Amendment. Would the city clerk please read the ordinance title?
Council Bill 905, ordinance, 2025 Speed Limit Ordinance Amendment, an ordinance of the City of Federal Way, Washington, relating to speed limits, amending Federal Way, Federal Way Revised Code 830040.
All right. Counselmember W., do you have a motion?
Yeah, I move approval of the proposed ordinance.
Second.
All right, there's been a motion, a second. Is, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Matter passes unanimously. All right, second reading and enactment, Council Bill 906, ordinance, providing for the acquisition of property for right-of-way improvements, South 288 Street Road Diet, Phase 2. Would the city clerk please read the ordinance title?
An ordinance of the City of Federal Way, Washington, providing for the acquisition of certain property for the purpose of constructing right-of-way improvements in the vicinity of South 288 Street, from Pacific Highway South to Military Road South, known as the South 288 Street Road Diet, Phase 2 Project, describing the public use and necessity of such property, directing staff to exhaust reasonable negotiation efforts to purchase such property, providing for the condemnation of the property, and directing the city attorney to initiate all necessary actions and proceedings in the manner provided by law for said condemnation if attempts to purchase are not successful.
Thank you. Counselmember W.
I move approval of the proposed ordinance.
Second.
There's been a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, actually, we're gonna suspend that vote. Counselmember Honda, you have a question? Actually, can we just withdraw that first vote, or not?
I think we just voted.
Well, I don't think everybody did.
It's just still a question.
Let's pull it, let's pull it back, if that's possible. Counselmember Honda?
My question is, if I was contacted by a citizen, and they wanted to know if they, the condemnation letters, so, if they don't get a letter in a timely fashion, there was some concern about that. And so my question to staff is, how do, do these letters go out, and do they have to sign for the letters, or they just mailed in the normal mail?
Where's EJ? There's EJ. Ryan, is this something you should answer, or should we have EJ?
Well, our, most of these go out through our condemnation agent, who EJ is the one who communicates with that person.
All right. EJ Walsh, I'm ready, our Public Works Director. EJ, did you hear the question?
I did. So our condemnation, as Ryan said, our condemnation agent sends them. They are certified mail, and they get sent twice, as well as advertised through the paper, depending on which paper it is. So everything that we have done has been properly noticed.
And do we know that every property owner received the letter? They signed for the letter?
So our, I would have to confirm that. Yes, that is our general practice at a, at a high level, is to make sure we get all the receipts back. For this specific one, I would need to confirm that, but in, in general, the practice is that is a yes.
Thank you. I appreciate your answer. All right, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other discussion questions before we resume the vote? All right, let's, just for clarity's sake, let's, let's, there's been a motion, a second, a discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Matter passes unanimously. All right, thank you. Item D, second reading and enactment, Council Bill 907, ordinance, providing for the acquisition of property for right-of, right-of-way, it's written ROW, improvements, Pacific Highway Non-Motorized Corridor, Phase 2. Would the city clerk please read the ordinance title?
An ordinance of the City of Federal Way, Washington, authorizing the acquisition of certain property for the purpose of constructing right-of-way improvements in the vicinity of the extension of the 16th Avenue Corridor, known as the Pacific Highway Non-Motorized Corridor, Phase 2 Project, declaring the public use and necessity of such property, directing staff to exhaust reasonable negotiation efforts to purchase such property, authorizing the condemnation of the property, directing the city attorney to initiate all necessary actions and proceedings in the manner provided by law for said condemnation if attempts to purchase are not successful, and declaring a statement of urgency.
All right, thank you. Counselmember W., do you have, oh, do you have a motion?
Yeah, I do have a motion, that I move approval of the proposed ordinance.
Second.
There's been a motion, a second. Is there any discussion or questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Matter passes unanimously. Okay, now, item E, second reading and enactment, Council Bill 908, ordinance, Title 18, Middle Housing Code Amendments. Would the city clerk please read the ordinance title?
An ordinance of the City of Federal Way, Washington, relating to middle housing, amending Federal Way Revised Code 1855020 and 1855060, and repealing Chapter 1825, Federal Way Revised Code and 1855050.
All right. Counselmember W.
I move approval of the proposed ordinance.
Second.
There's been a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Matter passes unanimously. Item F, second reading and enactment, Council Bill 909, ordinance, Title 19, Middle Housing Code Amendments. Would the city clerk please read the ordinance title?
An ordinance of the City of Federal Way, Washington, relating to middle housing, amending Federal Way Revised Code sections as detailed in the written title, and adding new section Federal Way Revised Code 19195012, and repealing Federal Way Revised Code 19205020, 19205030, and Chapter 19250, Federal Way Revised Code.
All right. Counselmember W.
Yes, I move approval of the proposed ordinance.
Second.
There's been a motion, a second. Is there any, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, matter passes unanimously. Item G, second reading and enactment, Council Bill 910, ordinance, Unit Lot Subdivision Code Amendments. Would the city clerk please read the ordinance title?
An ordinance of the City of Federal Way, Washington, relating to unit lot subdivisions, amending Federal Way Revised Code 1805010, 1855030, and adding a new chapter, 1870, Federal Way Revised Code, including 1870010, 187020, and 1870030.
Counselmember W.
Yes, I move approval of the proposed ordinance.
Second.
There's been a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Matter passes unanimously. Okay, now, we are on. Item H, second reading and enactment, Council Bill 911, ordinance, 2025 Annual Comprehensive Plan Amendments and Legislative Rezone. Would the city clerk please read the ordinance title?
An ordinance of the City of Federal Way, Washington, relating to amendments to the city's comprehensive plan text and zoning map, and changing the zoning of approximately 1330 acres for multifamily residential, RM 3600, RM 2400, and RM 1800 to multifamily residential.
All right. Counselmember W.
Yes, I move approval of the proposed ordinances.
Second.
There's been a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, matter passes unanimously. First meeting of the month, we've got council reports, we'll start with Councilmember Asef Dawson.
Thank you, Mayor, and, actually, I just want to acknowledge that my coworker is sitting here today, her first time at any council member ever, so thank you for being here, Allison. And with that, I have no report, thank you so much.
Very good, thank you very much. Counselor McDaniel.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so, real quick, when I first got on council, I had no clue how much time commitment some of this stuff happens to be with all the reading and the committees and all that stuff. And recently, I was able to chair a FedRec meeting, and after about two hours, two hours and 15 minutes of the meeting, I took a presentation and did not allow the presenter to do the full presentation, we kind of chopped it up a little bit. After the meeting, we had a young lady who had sat through the whole committee meeting come up to us and talk to us about it, and her whole comment was, "I was here for that presentation, and it made me feel not very good about myself." So I took a lesson learned on that one, we were able to provide her with the information she wanted, and the salt on the wound on top of that was how well she said we did as a council and the questions that we asked. So I'd like to apologize to the residents for not upholding my own standards and taking a little bit of a shortcut on that one. It will not happen again. So with that, that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you very much. Counselmember Honda?
Thank you. On June 18th, Wednesday, there is a free event. The Senior Advisory Commission is proudly presenting the June Senior Luncheon with special guest Center Stage Theater, and there will be a chance, if you go to that luncheon, which is a free luncheon, that you could win two tickets to a future Center Stage Theater show, which would be really cool. The Senior Advisory Commission works really hard. We meet the second Wednesday of the month, and from 2:00 to 4:00, right here at City Hall, and you are all welcome to join us if you'd like. I went to, with my husband, we went to the Tohoma National Cemetery for Memorial Day for the program there, and it was very, very moving. We got there at a little after 11 o'clock for a 1:00 program, and people were parking close to the entrance of the cemetery. It was, it was very, very packed. When I was in high school, at Stadium High School, we used to do a Memorial Day Cemetery in the court, and, you know, Stadium has a long, long history, it's over 100 years old, and we would, would honor the, all the students who had gone to war and had not come back. It was a lesson that I learned in high school, and still learning today, but freedom isn't free, and I would encourage anyone to attend that next year. It was very moving. I'd like to talk about Flag Day a little bit. I'm a member of the Serpentumis Club, and this is our 50th anniversary of being a club this year, which is an exciting milestone to, to reach. Flag Day is our, this is our 36th, 36th annual Flag Day. It's been here for a long time, one of those longstanding Federal Way events that people look forward to. It's June 14th, Saturday, at the King County Warehouse of Aquatic Center, and it's not outside, for most of those 36 years, it's been outside, but about two years ago, we moved inside, which we've been trying to do for a long, long time. So it's inside, there will be parking available, and, you know, the history of Flag Day started when the club took out a loan to buy flags along Campus Drive. And you can see some of the flags in the summer times, some of them are covered by the trees, and, I mean, when you drive on Campus Drive, and the wind is blowing, and you see the flags, it's really a magnificent sight, it's, it's awesome. Mike Dunwoodie, who ran the Aquatic Center for all the years that it was open, retired this year, and he was present for every single Flag Day, and this Flag Day is in his honor. And so I'd encourage you to come. The Lions Club of Federal Way will be there, providing hot dogs for us, as they've done for many, many years, and they're, they're amazing, we appreciate their support, but please come to Flag Day. Starts at 10:00, please come early. There will be music, early, patriotic songs, and the band will be playing those songs There will be music early, patriotic songs, and the band will be playing those songs afterwards, too. So please come and support Flag Day here in Federal Way. And a fun fact, there's a city in Washington State, it's a small city in eastern Washington, and they have the biggest Flag Day celebration in the entire country. They take a whole week for it. They have, even have a museum for Flag Day. I've never been able to go there and celebrate with them because I'm here. One day, I would like to go see what they do and how they do it, but it is the biggest Flag Day celebration in the entire country, here in Washington State. I'd like to thank the Arts Commission for the arts exhibition on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. I know they worked really hard for that, and I'd like to thank the staff for the support that they gave them. This is, once again, one of those things that will make Federal Way a great city that people look forward to. And my last item is, on July 19, I know that's a ways off, but there is an annual event called Celebrate 18. It's a benefit for celebrating and honoring the young women in our community that are aging out of foster care. It's like a birthday party. It used to be held down at the Community Center in Auburn. This year, it's moving to the Green River Community College Student Union Building because it grew too big for the Community Center in Auburn, which is really cool. But if you've never gone, it's really an amazing experience to watch the young women who, when they turn 18, no longer are in foster care, and they have to fend for themselves. And this organization supports those young women. So please, if you're available, get your tickets early and support the program. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilor Tran.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank Councilmember Paul McDaniel for running the FedRAC meeting while I was gone. Thank you very much about that. I don't have anything to report, just want to confirm that there is actually life beyond retirement, so looking forward to it. Thank you.
Good to know. Thank you. Councilor Walsh?
And Councilmember, I know there's life beyond retirement because yesterday I was tired. Today, I'm retired, so.
Bingo.
Just a few things. One is, I'll give it to Mike. Well, one is Flag Day, you know, in addition to coming out and coming to the Flag Day event, I hope that everybody in town is flying their flags. That's part of the purpose of Flag Day. Put up your flags. Fly your flags. We have a lot to be thankful for and proud of in our nation, and the flag represents that. And I hope that people will fly their flags. Also, I think a shout out to the police department. You know, I was taking a look at things, you know, the amount of public open-air drug use in the last year has dropped dramatically, dramatically. And I want to thank the chief and all of the police department, all of those out on the streets, SOU unit and everyone else, for the work with that. Also, you know, so many fewer shopping carts being pushed down the road. You know, it all goes to help present Federal Way in a good light. As the council president was mentioning, Federal Way is a beautiful place, and I want to thank the staff, the mayor, and everyone for helping Federal Way be a beautiful place, clean, virtually graffiti-free. You know, you think of the east side as being, you know, the nice area. You go up there on the freeway, graffiti is painted everywhere. In Federal Way, you know, it's graffiti-free. So anyway, thank you, all of you who support that. And once again, a shout out to the great job of the Arts Commission with the Arts Explosion. That's my report.
Very good. Thank you very much. Councilwoman W.
Yeah, I thought I would mention, you know, we went through a series of ordinances tonight where I made a motion, it was second, and we voted on it. But I think we need to let people know that our staff has been working very, very hard on making sure we're compliant with the new state laws on density and building homes and middle housing and rezoning our city. And tonight, you saw months and months and months of work being approved in a very, very short time with a lot of, with not a lot of celebration in telling you what we, what our staff accomplished and what's been done. So you saw a whole bunch of motions, but behind that is probably at least a year's worth of work, and there's still a lot more coming. So I just wanted to make sure that that wasn't just like, what are they doing? They're, I'm making a motion. Councilmember Walsh seconded him a whole bunch of times, and we all voted yes. So that was just taking everything across the finish line and putting the trophy up for everybody to see. The other thing I'd like to mention is, the farmer's market, I think we've been doing it three weeks since it became part of Federal Way's infrastructure. And I got to say, it's been very orderly. The staff people there that are setting things up and making it work seem very, very excited. The flow of the people is great, and it looks, and not that it was bad before, but it looks just really professional, and I think that we should be proud of where it's going and be thankful for all that's been done. And then lastly, I had the honor to host two Japanese students, I may have mentioned this, from Hachinoe. A few weeks ago, they came in on a Wednesday, and there was, I don't know, maybe 10 families that had one or two students from our sister city, and they stayed with them. And, you know, they came in on a Wednesday, they had dinner, they went on things, and they came around and came back. But I was told that they're going to be coming back in September with a potential another group. I got an email, anyway, asking if I would open my home up again. So I'm just mentioning it so people who never have had the chance to host some very polite students from Japan or city sister, or sister city, if that does come around, and you have an inkling to be with kids who don't speak English but are really well behaved and a cultural experience, I'd recommend that you check into it. So that's my report.
All right, thank you. Thank you for doing that. Okay, Council President?
I want to say thank you to Bob Derrick and for your beautiful poem in memory of our fallen soldiers. And I want to say thank you to Cory Booker, to Harold Booker, sorry, for, it is a terrible thing when you're in the middle of a trauma, and when somebody, when your family is in a traumatic event, and people are kind and helpful. People need to remember to do that. It's so helpful to you as a family to have that memory. July 25, do you know what July 25 is? It is, do you know? Do you know?
Is that the salmon bake?
It's a salmon bake.
Yeah, salmon bake.
A 69th annual salmon bake at Still Lake. Melissa Hamilton is in the audience. She's a member. Councilmember Honda is a member of the Coates. I'm a member. We're selling tickets. If you buy them ahead of time, they're $30. If you go at the door, they're 35. If you want to buy online, you can go online and buy them. But if you want to help out Melissa, myself, and Councilmember Honda, we have tickets available for you. But the salmon bake is really a big event in Federal Way. We usually get almost 800, 900, sometimes we've had 1,000 people come. If it's a nice night, we'll get a lot of people. And the salmon is amazing, so keep it in mind. You have until July 25, too. Fine $30. Thank you all.
All right, Councilmember Walsh?
Yeah, just one more. As Councilmember W was talking about the farmer's market, it made me think that, you know, one of the people that have really helped tremendously with that has been Bill Vodino. And I'd like to just let everybody know to be, have a prayer for him and his family.